All right, I got six o'clock. Let's call this meeting to order, roll call.
All right. Mitch Hudson?
Here.
James Coyle?
Here.
Scott Patchen?
Here.
Tam Lewis-Randall?
Here.
Jared Bramerson?
Here.
Terry Moyn?
Here.
Tyler Muntz?
Here.
Everyone is present.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to disqualify the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, this is posting, a copy of the notice was delivered on ten twenty-eight. It was faxed to Star News and the Cross Plains State Bank Black Earth branch, posted here at the municipal building and at the post office and on our webpage, www-blackearthresonson.com. And, public input. If anybody from the public that would like to speak?
Yes.
Yep.
My name is Bruce.
If you could just state your name and address, please.
Oh, my name is Thomas Connors and my address is twelve eleven Black Madison Street here in Black Earth. I just wanted to get some clarification on the garbage rate.
We're not to that portion yet, so it's going to be discussed and set later on in the...
Good.
Anybody else? All right, hearing none. Discussion action on approval of board minutes, ten four and ten twelve.
Are we also adding the ones you just handed us?
That was Public Works. That was very...
Okay, that'll be...
That was just...
Oh, okay. Great. I'd move approval of the minutes as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, discussion, action on operator license renewal. Suzanne Reese.
And nothing was, nothing came up for any type of check, so whatever's on the application is free to consider?
I think you want to approve the other type of celebration.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion action on invoices to be paid.
And one just did come through that I handed you specifically from...
DPA.
Yep. So that is not in the batch.
That's twenty-nine forty-four.
Yeah.
And then this is his detail for that invoice?
Yeah.
Perfect, okay. Got it?
I'll make a motion to move invoices to be paid. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, financial report. You want to just go over the balance on the... We're still working out the best way to try to create a very detailed one-page report and have it auto-populate. In progress.
In progress. So the big multi-page balance sheet, that's a pull from all accounts. I'm still waiting through the numbers, make sure what's been uploaded in the system matches the account, if there are manual changes or anything that wasn't, that isn't timed to someone, or to something, like Mitch Dunbar's department. But these are the reports that I mentioned last meeting that I've been trying to, or that now run, so they just have to be fine-tuned.
These are all individual reports that they have to run, or are they...
So this is a general report, so it just runs all per one. But I can run per fund, it just works for whatever.
The old, the old treasures report that we used to get, those accounts, the numbers were manually entered in those, they weren't auto-populated over to it.
Oh, okay.
And we're working on having it auto-populate into a format where it's easy to do and understand and you can have it in seconds.
Does this seem to be working for me? Really?
I haven't really had a chance to mess around with that so much. This, fairly a little bit, it's just sound creepy, but all the things along. We've had fifteen in-person voters today, which is over half of all of them combined, so it's been very busy now.
Cool.
Do you think this is the way you're, this is coming out now, is this going to be efficient for you, or is this going to be...
This is like a one-minute type of, I just go to it, print it, but...
This is an extra work for you to...
No, I don't do anything really manual.
But we will be able to create, based on this information, that it auto-populates into a treasures report format however we want it.
Right.
And, and that'll be real easy once that's done.
Yep.
So that one page that you guys used to get to have each thing, so that would, that should just be able to easily be imported, so you don't have to manually type every single number.
It's not as of now.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not increasing the workload.
We want to make it easy.
Right.
But it's, I mean, it's up to you, but from what you guys want to see, is that...
I think that's a good, this is a good start, I think.
Yeah. And this is auto-populated, right?
Yeah.
So then, if we have a question on any account while you're sitting there, you'll be able to pull it up and...
Um, it's, um, I don't have that on the system, so yeah.
But it's only like, it would take much to pull that up, is that what, I mean, I'm just...
Oh, no, that's just, type in whatever, so all the GLs are listed on the, on the left-hand side, and it's just a matter of typing that in and pulling it up. But all I had to do to pull this was just go to the financial reports that now work, and will kind of work, and just run what I want. If you just wanted to see electric, or just wanted to see water, I'd just type in six hundred or five hundred or whatever account, and then it just runs. But this is all, this is everything.
So on one hundred, is that all?
Yes.
Two hundred is...
Um, that's like taxes and, um, we don't really pay from there, so like with property taxes, we'll go into a different account and then they...
So what kind of taxes, is that, is it two hundred?
Mostly, I mean, it'll increase and decrease based on the time of the year, just if it's August when we get our big payment from, um, from the county, once all the taxes are settled from July versus January, when it'll be lower because we're...
Waiting for it.
Having to pay it all out.
I need...
And I can, I have a sheet that shows which, you know, what is one hundred, what is two hundred.
That's what I, okay, that's what I have.
Like four fifty is like ten, yeah.
What is it, what is it funded, whether that's...
Yeah, I can give that to you.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, just a bunch of numbers.
That's, that's just the headers that we can update or something?
Yeah. Or a cover sheet with the...
Our cover sheet when it worked, yeah.
Is it that auto-print's, right?
Um, I can just laminate it or something and give it to you there. So, my apologies, that's not what you're used to seeing?
No.
No, but this is a good progress, this is good.
This is more what I would like to see?
Yeah.
Once we used to.
Yes. I would make a motion to approve the financial reports for September as presented in the new format.
It'll be tweaked and unified.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, number nine, discussion action on resolution twenty twenty-two dash eleven. It's adopting Dane County Halloweary Mitigation Plan twenty twenty-two. They've adopted ours, they require that we adopt theirs for future stuff. It makes it easier to get money from FEMA on stuff.
Yes, so this is for every municipality in Dane County to...
We need to discuss this one before I, that's the one we discussed?
Yep, exactly.
So they're just waiting on us and a couple other municipalities so they can send to FEMA, so then FEMA says, you're good to go.
Emergency management worked hard to get that.
Yep, they did.
Yes.
Is there a reason we didn't approve it last time?
Well, we approved ours and they approved ours. Now we're adopting the whole Dane County plan as, kind of as a together, yeah, so...
They're approving Dane County to approve ours to some FEMA.
Yeah, that's where I was confused.
Getting me a... They're approving the approval.
Right. Or the redundancy, the part of the redundancy.
People back and get another approval.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash eleven.
Oh, second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, discussion action on resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve, urging the legislature and the governor to fix the broken system for critical local services funding.
I think I'm asking to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Give me, give me a little time to read, I'm just trying to see if it spells out how it's broken and how we fix it. Well, this is a template, right, from...
From the league.
From the league.
From the league, it's a joint thing that a bunch of people are doing together.
Okay.
So this will go to the league, it will go to the governor, and it will go to our legislature to jointly send a message and be more cohesive, to send a more cohesive message that everyone, you know, we're on, we're on this.
Mm-hmm.
So hopefully we'll send a bigger message than just...
Individuals, right.
Yeah.
Good with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, it's, it's something to read.
I told you. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Discussion action twenty twenty-two dash thirteen, village healthcare insurance contribution rate.
We discussed this last night.
Yeah, we did. We have to have the resolution...
We're now going to say we absolutely do that.
Yep, absolutely.
I need to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirteen.
A second.
Any more discussion?
Just clarification, so we're going up to eighty-eight percent from eighty.
Yep.
What's the twelve percent then? That's what was missed?
No.
That's employee coverage. Oh, that's what, oh, okay. Eighty and twelve.
Okay, cool, okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, one more resolution, twenty twenty-two dash fourteen, authorize carrying forward the allowable prior year unused levy capability.
Yes.
You have to get my law.
Um, so this one is a carry forward, so on the levy limit worksheet, there was, so it's kind of complicated how it's calculated. You can use your debt service payment to offset the amount that you can levy, so there was ten thousand, ten thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars that wasn't put towards the levy last year, and the way that you would do that, so if you have that ten thousand dollars left over, you would just reduce the amount of debt service, so then that number would be zero, so you wouldn't have to have a resolution to carry forward that money. So it's, just makes it more complicated the way that it was done before, so that it's, this is just so we can use this for our levy this year.
Yeah.
And why, did we just pay down our debt service? The levy service has been done in your press, that there was less than you could pay on that service?
So there was, so just using round numbers, if it was, if we, here's our levy and we have three hundred thousand dollars of debt service, instead of recording, then we have ten thousand dollars left over of the levy, we should have put two hundred ninety for our debt service number to make that number zero. So then we don't have to have this resolution to carry forward.
Totally, I get it.
So we'll do that differently in the future, so...
I'd move approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash fourteen to authorize the carryover of allowable prior used unused levy capacity.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Jeff?
So I'm gonna, I have a few extras of these, but I'm gonna set them down, then if you could just get back to me, I think Matt has one of these.
Hang on.
So first off, I want to thank you on behalf of the PAA for allowing us to provide services to them. Wonderful organization, and both acts, both PAA and Black Earth. I've had a couple of weeks here, I've been able to work remotely, pretty much raddest, but that's okay. It's, it's a wonderful opportunity to visit with people. Everybody's made me feel welcome. Mitch and I met for a couple hours before I agreed to take this assignment, and I had two options. One was to go to a larger municipality with lots of shopping centers, and as I told Mitch that, it was a little complicated with the environment. So I just made the final decision to come here, and I'm very happy I did. I felt very welcomed by the staff, by Public Works, library, clerk's office, Vanguard, everybody's just been wonderful. So, having said that, I wanted to share this with you, I thought, get my whole mind around, where is the money going in this community? I always like to start at the ten thousand foot level, like I was telling Mr. Patchen the other day. And the easiest way for me to do that is using a tool that's available from the Wisconsin Policy Forum, and so that you can understand what goes on. I had to combine different references here. The first one on page two is the material and data that came from the Wisconsin Department Administration, and it's population data, and it's current up to the final estimate for this year, calendar year twenty twenty. And to do a comparative analysis financially of communities, you want to try to get like for like as much as possible. So in other words, you wouldn't generally want to compare a town and a village, or a city and a village. I also looked at approximately forty miles in circumference and, I should say in radius from here, and so you see on page two a listing of villages. And you can see their corresponding populations. There's a little map on page three, which obviously there's not a lot of larger villages that fall into that category of roughly a thousand to twenty-five hundred to the west of Black Earth. But then as you flip the next page, you start to go into the data analysis. And this shows on the, on the top side there, this very first plate, if you will, the cost for general government. So it's important to understand what is general government. The general government is all of your administrative operations, okay, at the clerk, treasurer, administrator's office, that's what that corresponds to. Then we'll go to on the column here for a minute, street maintenance, net fire EMS. You have a joint fire district, so that is essentially removing the town of Black Earth and other towns, et cetera, from that total fire, you know, line. Same thing for net police. Net spending, net basic spending, operating, and then property taxes, shared revenue, the fiscal debt, fund balance, individual income. So you can see right off the bat in terms of your general government expenses, the number one government out of the ten is the village of Cambridge at something approximating two hundred and twenty dollars per capita for every person residing within the village. The village of Black Earth falls to the ninth place, and it's approximately eighty-five to ninety dollars. Now that's a good thing, in a lot of instances, they're neither really good or bad, but they, they should give you context like they gave me context to know where are things at. If you go to the next page, street maintenance, you can see there that Black Earth is now sitting at about a hundred and sixty dollars per capita. Again, neither good or bad, my general personal observation is that you get, you get a lot for your money for that, with the, with the numbers in your staff and the responsibilities they have, electric and everything else. If you go down to...
Sorry, can I ask a quick question, Mike, before you...
Yes, sure.
Is this just on, oh wait, it says this is the data for twenty twenty?
Oh, that's most recent available.
Okay.
And that comes from the Schedule C, which is roughly the equivalent of the municipality's income tax report that goes to the Department of Rattler.
Okay.
I have a copy here if you'd like to see, it's about twenty-one, it plugs in all of the auditor's numbers.
Okay.
Consolidates those to the total line relating to general government, okay?
Yep.
And to that fire, et cetera. So when you go then to that next page, streets per capita, you can see the village of Black Earth is, is roughly about a hundred and sixty-ish, in third place among municipalities. When you flip the page and you go to net fire, Black Earth is in sixth place, and it's approximately seventy-five or eighty bucks. Again, a lot of value for the money that you're putting in per capita. Compared to like Cambridge, it's almost two hundred and fifteen dollars per capita.
So when you look at that, does Cambridge have any fire that is on payroll?
Fire is not, partial EMS, yes.
Pardon?
Partial EMS.
Yeah, so that, that's right?
Yep.
Well, now this is for twenty twenty, it's going to drastically change.
It's going to change for us this year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, some of the details, that, by the way, is an excellent question, but you have to keep in mind, I didn't personally go out to do onsite visits and everyone is...
I understand, but I, you know, I need to pick context, changes.
Sure.
And my next question is, when you talk about town, so we do have a joint fire district named Black Earth, and why do we don't charge township? Is that what...
Township, it's all based on equitized value, and that helps it cheaper for the village, too. Absolutely.
Okay, is that what, no, I'm...
Does that help? Okay. So then when you go to net police, you can see that Black Earth comes in at two, over sixth position, at about two hundred and ten dollars per capita. And moving on to the next page, you can see for net basic spending, Black Earth falls back to sixth place. Again, I'm not here to advocate spending or to advocate not spending, that's not the point of this presentation.
What is basic spending from Brooklyn?
Uh, we're gonna get to that, okay? And we're actually gonna get to it on the last page, so, but again, excellent question. Net operating spending, next up, you can see Black Earth there is, again, at about sixth spot, and it's about roughly eight hundred, seven ninety to eight hundred when you add up police, fire, general government, property taxes, coming to the next page, shows you that Black Earth comes in sixth place with a per capita property tax, again, for, for the total dollars per capita, at about six hundred dollars. And you can see that's the bar, and then on the top, the residential share, shows you the perspective there. Now if you look at Mesa Maney, you can see there's a difference there, and part of what is accounted for there is the fact that that dot is really at the top of the bar, because they've got a lot more commercial and industrial there, okay? And if you go to shared revenue, and this goes back to the resolution that you just passed, and again, the shared revenue formula is very complicated. I've worked on it off of that for many, many years along with the expenditure restraint program, and just when you think you got it figured out, you need an excedrin, you know, re-labor, because your mind can go crazy. I mean, like a moment ago, the question was asked of the clerk, well, does this reduce our debt? That gets complicated because it's the debt on the formula, you still are paying principal and interest on your underlying debt. This is referring to the amount of principal and interest that you're paying for levy purposes. So, you know, you have to separate apples and oranges. But you can see shared revenue, you're basically in seventh place, or eighth place, and at some point, that becomes a real concern for a community. You can't rely totally on, you know, license fees, or ordinance violations, and fines fees and forfeitures, et cetera, et cetera, franchise fees, you can't, you can't rely on that to make up for the cost to do the operations that you need in every area from the library straight on through. You go to municipal debt on the next page, you can see that municipal debt, Black Earth is, comes in about fifth, municipal debt is about twenty-sixth or seven hundred dollars per capita. Sell is wild, but think about it, what's the per capita debt in a household of two on a four hundred thousand dollar home? That's a lot of, that's a lot of money. So, you know, that, you really have to look at it in that way. And then, then when you look at as a percentage of the state, state limits for debt, as I was explaining the other day, when you go to borrow money, we're gonna, we're gonna take John and Sally Doe imaginary taxpayers. When they go to borrow money to, for their home, let's, we'll say that the loan is worth two hundred thousand dollars. So generally, the financial person, the bank or credit union or whatever, they're generally gonna try to have no more than twenty-five percent of their expenditure income going to their mortgage payment. And some people say, well, it could be thirty or thirty-five, but the reason they use twenty-five is because of high inflation, increases in, you know, the Federal Reserve interest rate, et cetera, so it's about twenty-five percent. For municipalities, it's completely different. They don't add up everybody's income in the community and then provide, you know, a figure that this is your debt capacity. What they do is they look at equalized valuation, which is all of the values of all the property, and they give you a limit of five percent. So that's, that's your total capacity. And then, and take from you to understand the use of that debt, you add up all of your outstanding debt that's still on the books, principal and interest, until each individual issue is paid for. And that total then is the amount of debt used, and the difference is your unused capacity. And you can see, you know, really in context with the others where they're at. In terms of your fund balance, this is where you're pretty healthy, and that's a good thing, because you need money for rainy day fund, you need it for expenditures might occur, there could be floods and whatever, and you're not gonna have ARPA every year, you're gonna have, to have the ability to have funds if you can't go to the capital market, et cetera. So that's a really good thing. Now the dot shows the percent of your net operating spending. So to understand this concept, if you look at John and Sally, our taxpayers, they're both working, all of a sudden, there's inflation, a recession, they're laid off. What do we hear from financial advisors? Try to have at least six months or a year of your savings available to get you through so you're not in jeopardy of losing a home or other things. And so that is what you're looking at here where Black Earth is. You're in good shape that way, in terms of not spending the money, it's in the general fund, and you should be able to meet a very large unexpected emergency. And that's why having that general fund consistently there is, is really a good thing. When you go to individual income, and you look at that, you can see it's for at least eight or nine, well, seven or eight of them, they're all at approximately fifty-five to sixty-five thousand dollars per tax return, not per capita, this is the household per tax return, okay? the household per tax return, okay? And Black Earth comes in third, but that's just the way it worked, worked out. And so then, if you go to the next page, you can look at the annual levy, municipal levy. And you see on the extreme left, it says municipality, and above that, it says Village of Black Earth. And this shows you a bar graph and then a, a trend, if you will, of your levy from roughly 1984 to the present day. So, there's a lot to get into here. And I can't expect you to know it all. I certainly don't know it all, but it was my attempt to say, what is, what are those numbers you're looking at in your budget mean? What, what does it in historical context for Black Earth? And how does it compare to others? And then if you go to the last page, and this gets to your question about the definitions of some of these things like net operated spending, net basic spending, et cetera. So, that's it. And I know, which you've got a meeting you have to go to-
Yeah.
And he, and he told me, do your thing, buddy.
No long when to do.
No long when.
Exactly.
That is ironic coming out of you.
So I hope that I didn't abuse your time.
No, no, it's perfect. One thing I'd like to point out to people, though, is, is even though the municipalities are similar size, there's a lot of demographic differences. I mean, like, police for one. Belleville is much higher on police than we are, but they have 24 hours, 78 week coverage. We do not. So, you almost have to look at it based upon-
Well, and you also have, like Mesa, they have a lot more commercial pull.
Right.
Right, where we just don't have that area. We don't have that yet.
And do these-
I noticed Barnabille had like $10 of street spending, so I assume the county has roads in there that they maintain or something.
Yeah.
And then for that police, are these villages all contract villages with Dean County?
No, they are not.
No.
And Nuclearis was on their own, isn't that, is that?
What?
Is Nuclearis still around?
Yeah, Nuclearis, uh, Belleville, they're, they're their own police branch.
They're their own, okay.
But they have like 24 hour day coverage, right? So they might have six officers, we have two.
Yeah.
I just have one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
I am slow to pick up what you're putting down, but when you have- I heard it. When you have the, the blue dot-
Yes.
And right here is property taxes.
What is the black line, sir?
Harvey taxes.
Okay.
The Village of Black Earth is considerably under, we come in seven, it's that, you know, I don't want to say it, and we're at about, it says, looks like we're right around 60%. And then the dot is at 90%. I'm sorry, I'm not really understanding what that's telling me.
What that's telling you is that that is what the levy amount has been adopted by the village consistently year after year and reported on Schedule C to the Department of Revenue.
It's been 90% or 60?
Say that again.
Is, is where we're at, or is where this is?
No, it, that is, that is where you're at, is the blue bar.
The blue bar?
The blue bar, yes.
And so, the dot represents-
The dot represents residential share.
So the thing that we have the highest amount of residential-
90% of that 60.
Versus industrial.
Right, okay, that's, that's where I'm at.
Of all of these, we have the least amount of commercial versus per capita for residential.
So, in just, in conclusion, I accomplished what I wanted, but I had a lot of questions that came out of this, just like yours. And you want to be able to have a concept of operations when a person becomes a new appointed or elected official, and to see what's happening. I felt like I accomplished that in the roughly, you know, 16 hours that I put into it. But the, the outer questions about this department, that department, whether they have a contract with the county, or they have a combined department fire or whatever, those are things that, they don't show up in, in this system, so.
No, that's fine, yeah.
But it, it shows you where you're at compared to villages, your size, right?
That's exactly right. It's kind of that 10,000 foot up.
That's good.
Helpful, I mean, but it's not the final, maybe final answer.
Right.
So, the last thing I wanted to say is, again, close by saying thank you for giving PAA and me an opportunity to be of assistance to you, to get to know your staff and you as elected officials. And as somebody who's been both an elected official and appointed official and a consultant, when bills come out, I always like to see detail. I don't like to see, you know, a bill that's just got a number. So, I provided you with detail here that shows you where my time is spent.
Yeah.
And again, it's not perfect because I'm not punching a time clock for every project or whatever, but it's relatively accurate. So, in the future, I'm getting to know the community more and learn more, and I'll try to do the same kind of reporting to you, and I hope that's helpful. If it's too much print and too much lineage, I'll, I can adjust that up or down.
No, I know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
If you have no other questions, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Number 14, discussion action garbage recycling collection fee. Scott?
Okay, well, there's a lot of conversation about this in the last month.
Yes, there has.
Mitch and I have both had legal, we, we brought legal in on this to make sure that we weren't overstepping. And we are able to, to assess a fee on our recycling. We've decided that perhaps the $5 is on the high end of things, but there are things like administratively, Danny Fields calls, Matt gets called to go out clean up messes. There's a lot of stuff that goes on beyond and over and above that contract that I think we can pay for with this $2.50 fee. So what I'd like to do, and I'm not sure that this is according to Robert's Rules of Order, but I'd like to make a motion to rescind the, and readdress the discussion and vote taken at the October 4th board meeting regarding the new contract for garbage and recycling administrative fee with Pelletary Waste that the board passed on a six to one vote, looking for new discussion and details from that time. That would be my motion right now.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Let's open discussion up. Scott, what are you suggesting?
Well, in the talks with the attorney, he said, we're not the only municipality that does this. We've been a fee-based, we've been fee-based for, ever since. So it's not like we're taking from general fund to do this. He, he has advised that administrative costs associated with billing issues, pickup complaints, public work cleanup, all that stuff. The board can set a fee at a reasonable rate to cover these expenses, and with what we've talked about here with shared revenue being cut and all the, well, just the fix that every community's in, I'm going to present a new motion and put it on the table. I make a motion to add an administrative fee of $2.50 to every monthly billing for garbage and recycling. This fee would begin in January 2023 and will continue throughout the 10-year contact with Pelletary, or contract with Pelletary Waste. As Pelletary rates increase, our administrative fee will remain at $2.50 per household. That's my motion.
I'll second it. Discussion?
Okay, I'll go first. So this is going down from whatever-
Five.
Five something.
Right.
So instead of going from five the first year and four the second, third the second, we're just going to 250, right?
Easy, round number.
And then, that would be, that 250 is where we would be at the end of that five-year period anyways, right?
Yeah.
Ten, ten-year period.
Ten-year period.
That's even, right?
Can be addressed by the board in 2032.
At the end of the 10 years, we're almost at that 20.
Yeah.
So at the end of the 10 years, we were almost at $20 anyway. Now we'll be a little bit higher than the $20?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be like-
19 or something, you want 22.
It's setting a, it's setting a fee based upon what you do instead of based upon-
Yeah.
The timeframe.
Right.
So do we have a clue of what we send in fees that we're going to charge?
Well-
How much do we actually do for the garbage coming through?
Well, it comes through on the bill, on the, on your electric bill, right?
No, he, he said, how much time do we spend?
But what do we actually do?
Not going to get a separate bill. Does the residents aren't going to get separate bills?
Nope. Are you saying like what does-
Yeah, so you're going to have to have it on your, you're going to process it on your own, right?
Yep.
Does your system automatically get that when you do the electric bill? Does it automatically-
I'd have to set it up that way, yeah.
You have to set it up that way?
That's not what you're asking, though, James, right?
No.
He's asking what-
What do we-
What do we do to warrant that $2.50?
Yeah.
So, talking with the attorney, it's reasonable to do fees for billing, partial mailing of that bill, billing, and different things like that.
So what does, we rescinded the motion for $20 a month. Reducing that to 250, what would that be per household then?
250 per meter.
Because we were going to do 20.
Yeah.
It was going to be $20, but it's just be 250.
We're going from 20 dollars per household per month per bill down to 250.
No.
Well, 250 on top of the cost of the 250.
14 plus the 250.
Yeah.
And then at the end, it'll be 19 plus 250.
In 20 years, right, yeah.
So at the end of the year, or at the end of the 10 years, they'll be paying more-
More than 20 dollars.
More than 20, whereas the other way, they would be paying the 20. So this is actually going to be more for the households.
Less, less over 20 years, though.
Yeah.
It dropped, it dropped.
Fully up to over 20 years.
It dropped.
Yeah, less over-
10 years.
Over 10.
10 years.
I mean 10 years.
Twenty years.
I meant 10.
It dropped.
At the end, it'll be more, but over the course of the time, it'll be less.
Yeah.
Total dollars in 10 years will be less.
And the, the justification for this is it's only for administrative. When we passed it before-
You can't do that.
You can't use it for capital expenditures.
Nope, absolutely cannot.
Right. And that came from legal?
And that came from legal.
But it could be used for, I don't know, say, somebody drives around, knocks over a trash. What happens? Somebody drives, drives, knocks over a trash bin, or there's heavy wind and there's trash all over the place. Residents are expected to clean that up out of the streets, or is that something that's called pub, does public works get called in to do something, or?
No.
Something weird.
Really, kind of my understanding was that, that we already pay, like we pay for the paper to print the billing.
Yep.
We pay for the stamps to sign the billing.
We pay for the building to house the equipment for the billing.
Exactly. So really, what this, this 250 will do is free up- 250 per household-
Yeah.
To go in a different direction of the, that the government, that the village is spending. So in like a case where the wind blows and somebody blows it over and public works goes and cleans it up, or, you know, gets kicked over and public works goes and cleans it up, we'll probably, the village will still eat that cost, but it will, the 250 per household helps mitigate our investment. We've already been, we've just eaten that expense all the way through.
But that's the offset, Zach. It's, it's for that.
So there's a offset, yeah.
Because they get calls.
Right.
They have to deal with stuff all the time. You guys get calls all the time, didn't pick up my garbage and-
And hopefully that'll be less because we're going to Pelletary.
Yeah, hopefully.
Hopefully.
And Pelletary has their own 800 number for the residents to call them directly if there's a problem with their drivers.
Yes.
So, go ahead.
I think if we add 250 per, per house or per capita, well, actually, that'd be per month, right?
Per month.
So that's $20 per. We would jump from ninth place to seventh place or eighth place. General government spending, still, still on the lower end, which is good.
Yes.
And this, and this is-
At legal, yes, it does.
Okay.
Fully justified.
Fully justified.
Yeah, question. Yep. Um, any more questions? Does that help?
Uh, not exactly.
Okay.
I'm trying to figure out, you have a 10-year guaranteed contract, right?
We have a 10-year break. We have a 10-year contract with Pelletary.
Right.
What is the actual contract break with Pelletary? That's what I'd like to know.
Uh, 14-
14 cents.
It goes up over the years.
The first year is 14.
Then it's not a guarantee of any kind.
It's guaranteed certain increases for 10 years.
It's guaranteed to increase for 10 years.
So every one of them, everybody that builds-
That's where I, where I was misunderstanding. I thought you had a guaranteed contract at a set rate.
Nope, they won't do it. Nobody does that.
Nobody would do that, and so-
And now have we ever, so.
When we contracted with them, they said, we promise not to go above this dollar amount in year two and in year three and in year four. So for the next 10 years, there is an increase, and it is a smaller increase than if we were going to go on year to year because we couldn't go on year to year, right?
When I asked the other day, it was just for platform, $20, it's going up.
Well, that's what we-
Well, that's it.
That was, that was-
That was something.
Yeah, no doubt, no, absolutely.
But that would have been $20 that never would have changed for the next 10 years. So this year, every year, and for the next 10 years, every single year, you're going to see an increase.
Yeah.
So really what it is, is Pelletary's increase plus 250 from the, from the Black Earth village, right?
Yes, that was my other thing that was a little irritating to start with. It wasn't all garbage, right?
Yeah. Well, the problem is, it costs the village money to process and build the stuff every month and take the calls. It's not fair for it to be a true pass-through and us to have to cut street projects and something else to cover that money.
Well, and seriously, it's your money.
Yeah.
We're spending your money.
Of course, sure.
So really what we're trying to, and, well, you know what, we're spending our money, too. We all live in a village. So what we're trying to do is figure out, we're losing money from the state of Wisconsin on this and this, but we still have to meet our, I mean, we still have to meet our budget, right? You'll be super pissed off if Matt doesn't come and plow yourself. I would-
I wouldn't be. I'd get super pissed off if my driveway gets- Why, for three times in a-
Yeah, I understand that, too, but it pisses me off more if I can't get to the stop time to go to work.
All right.
So you know what I'm saying? I'm just trying to explain this to you. Do you feel more comfortable now that you understand?
Well, yeah, more or less.
We're not, we're not trying to break you.
We're just more frustrated with the change in that there was very little done to notify residents that all of a sudden the carts were coming. Because a couple of years ago, we changed the garbage providers, providers was brought up. There was a survey sent to everyone, and overwhelming responsibilities we likely have, and everyone in their neighborhood is like, we're not too happy about these carts.
But the response to that is, we did do the survey. County Country said that they would not bring in the carts.
Really?
This year, this, now we were up with County Country. So at this point, have to, we will shoot with County Country. County Country's going to cart stool.
We've already been asked, yeah, we've already been asked twice to-
Yes, they have asked.
Twice because they don't have the labor.
They can't find the labor to run the truck like they run here.
With a manual pickup.
So then we have complaints because they're dropping stuff on the ground, they're, so we did have-
We're dismissed.
We did have it on the website that we were having these meetings with County Country and with Pelletary to discuss our options.
It was both in the newsletter.
Do you have it in your website?
Been a 90-day process.
We had it in the paper.
I don't take the paper. I don't look at your website. I don't go to the post office.
And it was on your newsletter.
It was on the newsletter.
It was in the insert on the bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't the newsletter you got with your bill.
I, I do respect the fact it wasn't in the newsletter, but when I get the, the light bill, I know what's in the envelope, so I set it on the counter, and the day I finally opened it was two days after you wanted it for a 100%.
And so I'm-
We have a village board meeting every month.
That could, that could kind of be a learning lesson because we, we really honor people to come to our board meetings. We want to-
We appreciate it, actually.
And it was kind of nice when it was on then, and 2000 then. So thank you.
I like, I'll, I'll come sometime when I haven't got a bid.
We'd like that, too.
Really, if you go on that website, my email is listed. Every single one of us email is listed. You are more than welcome to email every single bit you have to me because I've written every single one.
Okay. Any more discussion?
We have a motion, right?
We have a motion? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Well, I oppose. Carries. All right, reports. Vanguard, we didn't have one. It will be in November, and it's not in my calendar yet. I thought it was the 16th. Do you know offhand, Scott? Uh, haven't got the invitation yet. I think it's the 16th. At six thirty. Um, I did talk to Sean today. They didn't have anything going on except for new services going in. Um, nothing major that time of year to get the maintenance done and, and still working on new services. Fire district.
Oh, we have not met since our last, we meet this Thursday, November third.
James, Dan I want?
Uh, we met very quickly on October twentieth, uh, just went through bills, um, national savings, there was no discard violations.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, our next meeting is the seventeenth, then we.
EDC, we did not meet, but we are meeting, what, the twenty second?
Yes, November twenty second.
At five thirty?
Yes.
EMS?
Uh, we last met in September for a personnel meeting, and we will meet again November tenth at six thirty.
Okay. Hi, Brory.
We met on October eighteenth. Couple of highlights, um, Bailey has sent out a draft, or an RFP for architectural services just to do a, kind of an overview of the New Heights property, so that she had in the works. Uh, we did a budget draft approval. She had a policy presented and approved, um, contingent on one more review for an animal, a service animal policy. Um, we approved Thanksgiving weekend hours. Um, they're gonna be closed on Thanksgiving and then the Friday after and Saturday. This mirrors their twenty-one hours, which worked out well, twenty twenty-one hours. Um, so they'll repeat those for twenty twenty-two, and the library board vacancy is being recruited as we speak. And I know Bailey will have more in her report, so.
Bailey?
Um, so we won't repeat any of that. Um, for the animal policy, um, I did share a copy later, so I need image, um, for questions, so I'm happy to answer any questions about that. Um, we had our new carpet installed last week. It went really smoothly, thanks to public works mostly. I told them I would have dropped dead over there if it weren't for them, so I appreciate it very much. Um, so I spent last week moving furniture, moving books, um, what was it called?
It looks great.
Yeah.
Looks very nice.
I love it. I can't stop looking at it.
Good, good.
Um, um, we had a local author fair on the twenty-first. We had a whopping sixty, six zero attendees.
Awesome.
Good job.
Come to that.
That's great.
Um, it went really smoothly. It created a lot of buzz, um, and I've already been contacted by several other local authors that would like to participate in something like that in the future, so I'm looking forward to signing another one. Um, and Black Earth Historical Society did a wonderful job of decorating and making sure everything was set up the way we needed it to be.
Perfect.
It was an amazing partnership, um, and I got lots of good feedback. Um, and then, um, as Terry said, we had a request for proposals for architectural services that went out last week. Um, the proposals for that are due on December second, um, but the selection process will go into twenty twenty-three. It'll be quite a lengthy process, even once we get the proposal. Um, and our next meeting is on November fifteenth, so hope to be right up.
Thank you. Thanks, Bailey.
One question for the, the, work with the New Heights, uh, building. Are, are you all able to get like grants and stuff to fund that work, or like the state helping or anything like?
Um.
Don't know yet. Don't know, too soon?
Probably not, right?
Yeah.
They're working on it, okay.
So that's, that's part of what we want architects to be able to help us with.
Okay.
Is to find those grants and apply for those grants.
Perfect.
And that's why we want to, um, ask kind of good architects so that we can be more cost effective in any projects that we take on.
I mean, I know, I know that a big part of that too, if that were a project that goes forward, bringing it up to AA or.
Yep.
Up to standard ADA standards? When I lived in Madison on the east side, that was a big, playground equipment ADA accessibility was a huge thing. And the, the school we at, were at, uh, elementary school needed equipment, uh, new playground equipment, and they got a huge grant from ADA people to upgrade those things rather than needing to put the bill on themselves, so.
Yeah.
Something to think about.
Yeah, I'm sure that there's money elsewhere. Probably need a little bit of help finding it.
Yep, right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Cool, thank you.
But yeah, um, next meeting is on fifteen.
Thank you. Scott? Public Works, we met, um, on October twenty-sixth at four thirty. I'm gonna let our public works director explain what happened. That's something.
That was good.
We got together and we discussed some options. Uh, I've been doing a lot of research throughout the summer and stuff, looking for sewer jetter replacements on a forty-year-old machine. Um, went to Illinois one day in Milwaukee, kind of looking at different options. Happened to find that the city of Lodi had a truck back jetter from nineteen ninety-nine, but it only had eighty-five hundred miles on it, great shape. I don't think it was hardly ever out in the winter, so I mean, there's very little frame rust, anything like that. Uh, so the committee got together and the motion was approved for roughly around seventy-one thousand dollars. Uh, we got it for sixty-seven thousand dollars. We have a truck. Uh, it's currently at, uh, Mount Ford, at the co-op, getting all the safety checks and stuff. Um, fluid's changed on the chassis portion of it, and after that, we'll eventually take it down to Milwaukee and have the, um, jetter pump checked, the vacuum system checked on it, just getting all those things, make sure everything's up to par on it. But apart, it sounds like it's a really good find. There is, um, some money set aside as well for footsaws, jetter nozzle, and stuff like that, since that's kind of more neat to the municipality that, that machine is functioned for. So, yes, I got for that meeting.
That was it. The other nice thing is you can also use it for like water main breaks and.
Yep, um, so, yeah, like since it's got the vacuums, we can use it for water main breaks, uh, hydroexcavating around utilities, um, cleaning out catch basins for multi-purpose than just a standard sewer jetter. Uh, as I said, we got it for seven thousand. Brand new, this truck would be set up all at three hundred and fifty thousand and be waiting two, two and a half years. So, so hopefully it's a good find. I think we'll make good use for it. Um, better wise in the public works world, um, brush tripping, obviously everyone's seen the lead.
Oh.
Um, we're a five-man crew this week. I got Bush and Paul second leaves. Um, other guys are trying to get parks cleaned up, find the mowing done, leaves mulched. Uh, I did get the mulcher for the Tower Park, uh, project, so that's getting started. Um, meters installed for new houses, so busy. Community park is shut down, the bathrooms are shut down for the winter, so next week we'll probably hammer out these. Get back to metering camps.
Okay. And our next meeting will be November fourteenth at four P M.
Four thirty. Is it four, almost?
Or is it four thirty?
Four, four thirty.
Four thirty.
Yeah.
Forty.
Yep.
Well, I'm glad you got a new toy now. And I am so glad you.
So, yeah, it's gonna make sure that the.
I appreciate it.
Always flows downhill.
Yeah, thank you for being so.
It's gonna make sure that the flow's downhill.
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna decorate and put a field day parade next year.
Yeah, we love for you to get twenty-two years to something else. Hopefully this will give us another five, ten years, and then we can just keep progressing, moving forward. Um, still have to look out for string sweeper. It's been good, so.
Well, I am sure that we did so well with this one. I have all the same field.
You set the bar high now.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Right, now you're making sure.
Yep, all right, parks.
Uh, we did not meet in October. Uh, we will meet again November fifteenth at six P M.
Okay, please, I'm not on that commit.
Sorry. I have a big old circle on it now.
Uh.
We don't have.
We don't have a date set yet.
They don't have a date set, no.
Something about, was it curtain? It can't, I thought I got it canceled, but.
Oh, you didn't get it.
The last one did cancel.
Just didn't have anything on the agenda.
Yeah.
We just haven't got it yet.
Want to waste time, but yeah, we need to pick a date, I guess.
Are we still on schedule for our new officer?
Yep.
No, December first now.
December first now?
That's what I just heard.
When?
I didn't hear that.
Well, I just told me.
Who?
So, uh, she.
They're really something at the county level, aren't they?
Yeah.
Oh, comment.
Well, she, she had to be on leave for a little bit, so there's, yeah, so we'd kind of put him back a couple days.
Okay.
Sorry.
It was only the twentieth, so it was ten days.
Yeah, so never a far.
Oh, okay.
Budget-wise, I mean, that's, you know.
Helps the budget.
Yeah.
There you go.
All the silver lining.
Helps next year's budget, so, all right. Let's do, uh, discussion action on budget. All right, there was a new, you know.
You got draft three and four, so.
What?
Do you want me to go through?
Yes, let's.
So draft three was from Friday, when I was getting that out to you. Draft four is on legal size paper, so that's the one I went through. Um, so that includes that ten thousand dollar carryovers that you just approved via revolution. Um, you'll also notice in the difference of three and four is the, um, uh, top right corner, the number proposed. So that is eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand versus the six hundred thousand seven seventy-seven. So at the very back, there's a last page that.
That single one all by itself.
Yeah, just a little solo, even. Um, so that shows what our actual levy was for twenty twenty-one. Um, and then below that, it'll show, so that's our max levy before adjustments, and like I mentioned earlier, um, that adjustment would be debt service and that ten thousand dollars are the ten thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars. Um, so that brings our twenty twenty-two allowable levy to eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars. Um, so, but draft four is balanced. I went through and made notes in orange. Um, so those highlights, if you know me, I love orange, so that's why I brought it.
Um, the eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand is our levy amount with our debt service also included, which was not in the past budget, so you, it's, so.
So it automatically went up because you put that debt service in there.
But it didn't, it didn't really go up.
And because it's the same, we didn't see it.
Pretty close, right, correct. Um, what we did do is, me and Danny had sat down a couple times and had talked.
Yeah.
Um, where we did cut the rest of it was, uh, economic development. Um, had sixteen thousand four hundred and seventy-six carryover, and they had ten thousand budgeted. We took that ten thousand out, and we're gonna carry the sixteen over. And we did the same thing with emergency management. They had ten thousand to carry over, they spent nothing. And instead of budgeting another ten thousand, we did the carryover that took the twenty, plus the ten thousand that you had, and then another seven thousand with the new figures, right? Was there seven, oh, the seven thousand we added back in.
One, yep.
And, uh, that was really the only big changes was EDC, and so if everybody's good with that, it's balanced.
What's in the green, um, lighting utilities? Why is that, I'm not understanding that, per, per B V, ten twelve, I don't know.
As I told you about the rolling byhouse.
Really bored. That's the twenty-five we cut at our meeting.
Yeah, so the green boxes are what you guys approved from last time.
Yep.
No, boy, you got it.
Then there was another section, what was that, uh, we talked about, uh, Danny, where, uh, there was a hundred thousand budgeted for, it was really, we could only do sixty-six thousand, wasn't that the hydrant rental?
Correct.
Yeah, the number that was in there from Shelley was.
Really the what?
We can only do the legal number of sixty-six thousand something, not a hundred thousand.
For hydrant rental?
Okay. Hydrant rental fee that gets.
Okay, okay, thanks.
So you'll see that as fire protection on your utility bills, so.
So that got fixed too.
Okay.
Yes, and I spoke with the P S C this morning about that number, cause that came from, um, I submitted our budget to Ellers as a review of just, you know, what are we doing, is this new to me type of stuff, so just another set of eyes on it. They sent that back. I confirmed with the P S C, um, of what our actual number is. So there's three different ways that, uh, municipality can fund the, uh, fire protection fee. So it can be fully through taxes, which affects when, I mean, what we're running into is just levy. Uh, it can be fully on utility bills, which the, uh, residents will see that on there. So it's just if you go from full on the taxes to full on the utility bill, that's a big jump. I mean, it's still, you're paying relatively the same. The benefit of having it on the utility bill is that it is, uh, for tax exempt. Um, and fees, they don't see that on the tax bill, so they'll, they'll be paying their fair share on the utility bill.
They pay this, yeah.
Um, the other step, so we're kind of in that middle step of we have part of it.
Half of it, right?
Yeah, so it's almost, so it's a hundred and twenty-something thousand that we pay, uh, for our, our fire protection, and that was from the twenty nineteen docket that we submitted to the P S C of a little, uh, our like mini rate case that we did, um, back then. And that was what was determined to be our fee to collect, so we collect sixty-six thousand through the tax levy and the remainder through utility bills. Um, so that is how that is broken down.
So if we took it off of, if we took it off the tax roll and put it all on, that help our levy limit?
Yes.
Okay.
I heard we couldn't do it this year.
Couldn't do it.
We have to file, we, we're eligible.
You have to file.
That's what I thought.
We're eligible to file, um, with the P S C, since it's within five years, we can file to ask to do that. Um, they would do a review, and then we could propose that we wanted off of, um, off of our levy and onto tax bills, uh, fully. Um, and the guy that I talked to is actually a Black Earth resident, um, that did our rate case back in twenty nineteen. Um, he is the one I was talking to, and he said that it's been coming up a lot more because of levy restraints, um, and things like that.
And you wouldn't have to do it all right away either.
How do tax exempt people get, how do they not go on their taxes?
They don't pay taxes.
Yeah, they don't pay tax.
They don't get tax bill.
But it's not a tax, because it was on our tax bill, but you're saying that tax exempt people didn't pay with.
They don't pay property tax.
But when it's on our utility bill, they pay for it?
Yeah, yeah, they have to, correct.
Cause if they don't.
Cause they're paying no water and.
But it, why is it, why isn't a tax on one and not on the other?
You know, that is a discussion we could.
I mean, that's.
A lot, but there's other shit on there, but.
Cause if that's not being paid for, that makes sense.
But it's being collected, so the, the way that it was collected and the way that the P S C came to that hundred and twenty thousand dollar number is that these are the amount of customers you have, this is the amount of money that you need to have the charge. That's why it was set at seven twenty-five versus nine dollars. It's because most of it's for partially is being collected by taxes, but the other half needs to be collected from utility bills. So they set the number from that, back in, when it was in twenty nineteen, when they did that study.
So many, none of us are really affected by this by that, you know.
Not a half, a handful.
Oh, but not, probably, it's probably not gonna be like a, a significant amount, right?
Right.
Well.
No, not so. You got Hartland, Hartland, Country Village.
Churches.
Churches.
The school will be going from there to.
The school.
Yeah, that's kind of bad, so, so. So, anyways, it's something to look at in the future, not this year.
So.
But that's the reason we have to know.
All right. I do have a question on, so we're only allowed to have sixty-six thousand on our budget?
That's the maximum that we can levy.
So what about these other years where we charge seventy-five thousand, hundred thousand, and eighty-two thousand, where we?
At the budget amount, I don't know what was actually charged.
Well, I don't know if your account was coming in and combining.
Yeah.
Okay.
What we collect. What we've collected.
I just wanna make sure we aren't doing something.
We know we're, we know we're right right now.
Okay. Into the past and all.
I d, can't tell ya, right? Can't trace where exactly, so.
So really, I will make a motion to approve.
I just wanted to mention also, um, I didn't mean to cut you off, but, um, I rounded most of these. It just seems silly to me to have budgeting down to the cents.
I agree.
Um, just round it to the whole numbers. Um, when I talked to the other municipalities, they also made that comment of, why do you have pennies in your budget?
I would even say round to the hundreds, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So where some of them, I did make some rounding, um, just to get it up to just a nicer number, so you're not trying to put around some weird numbers. But there are some of them that just had to be to make the numbers work, so.
And this does need to be approved tonight and needs to go in the paper tomorrow?
Yes.
For a public hearing.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve budget draft number four.
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
I just wanted to, I just wanted some clarification on the economic development money that was, you know, is on the block. Um, mostly because of what Jeff presented and that like ninety percent of our tax levy is borne spared by residential people. You know, we don't have very much business in town, so is it a good idea to not invest in economic development?
So to say for that is that.
I mean, we still have sixteen thousand left over we're carrying over, so it's not like there's no money. But I just wanna think about that and discuss that a little more.
So also in the report of the general fund amounts also, just because it's sixteen thousand in here doesn't mean that we can only spend sixteen. This is just what we are levying.
We have a lot of, our general fund is in good shape.
So we, yeah. So there's money above what is written.
And then, and then I just. And then I just wanted some clarification on what that economic development money in the past has been spent on to develop, developing economic.
We've spent, in the past, we have spent it to help existing businesses.
So within Orpik Gardens.
We did what we just did with, um.
Orpik?
The bowling alley.
That's, that's tiff though. Yeah, that's tiff.
But we could have given here.
That's not tiff, no.
We could have given.
That sixteen, twenty, thirty thousand's not tiff.
Well, that's fifteen of the funds that came out of E D C.
Uh, some of it, yeah.
And isn't that where the whole wine market's coming from? Is that now?
No, the.
That's.
That's commerce, uh.
Chambers.
Chambers.
We're not paying anything.
Okay, okay. I thought some of that was kinda, I thought that the chamber was.
Not a dime.
And didn't have a dime, so that, that economic development.
I have not been approached of, for any request.
Nope, that was it. We were not gonna spend anything, yeah.
So what, what would economic development money be spent on that? Is it things like, uh, doing, help, helping with grant writing and, and, uh, you know.
It can do. There could be all kinds of things.
Evaluating properties that might.
But one, the signs, the signs coming into the village.
Okay.
Done with E D C money.
Okay.
Um, things like that, um.
And at one point they were talking about doing, replacing some of the signage on the, the light poles going down.
Yeah.
I don't know whether that ever went.
Yeah.
Now, the banners.
Would it be nice to have twenty-six thousand in there this year instead of sixteen to do things like that? Absolutely, we.
Yeah. I, I know, I know that, I know.
A lot of bad streets.
Yeah.
Being, being like an environmental, uh, background guy, I know that in the past there, there are projects that municipalities have helped drive ec, economic development. You know, a blighted property that's got mild contamination. The pro, the project can't ever start because, uh, the buyer doesn't wanna take the risk of taking on a property. And the seller doesn't wanna allow the buyer to do an investigation. And the village comes in and says, well, we'll do the investigation and as long as we don't see anything over X, then we can give that. And, and nobody takes on liability or exposure or anything. Um, so I was just wondering if money gets used for things like that.
It really, it depends what comes up and right now there's not much going on and there needs to be, so.
Yeah. Or, or I'm thinking like, or, or I'm thinking it could be some, like economic development. I'd see that property that's on Mill Street, it's small, but it's still a property and it's got a sign on it for sale. But I feel like it's not marketed very well, right? Like, that's something that could be.
Which one is that?
Probably not even on, it's right here, those, those shoeboxes.
Oh.
That's really property, that's right.
No, it's got a sign up for sale, but it's probably not on the C L S or whatever, then.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's not.
Why doesn't it go up for sale?
I don't know. The sign looks like it's about to fall over.
Well, it didn't have a sign up there forever.
Yeah.
And I think it's had a sign up there since I lived there.
Shelley, yeah.
Yeah.
There was two offers brought to Shelley and I don't think that they ever went to the ward.
Well, it's because, yeah, it, they were brought.
No, you never went to the ward?
No.
My understanding is that was because it's zoned commercial, um, and the people wanted to use it for residential.
You can't, why would you want it not?
That would just go to plenty.
Yeah.
You would not want it not commercial.
Yeah.
There's never been anybody.
No, you wouldn't wanna do it, cause it'd be dumb.
Yeah.
You can't build up to, I mean.
Yeah.
Without.
There were also that, that somebody wanted to buy the, um, the old lunch bucket and make it into offices and rentals.
What's the old lunch bucket?
The next door.
Mac.
Oh, Mac, right.
And they were told that they could not, and I'm like, yeah, you can.
Well, there's an offer pending on it now.
Well, that's all right, but.
Yeah, that's not, that is.
That's not the one. I mean, that'll just require a conditional use permit to come from the board.
Yep.
I just, mostly my discuss, uh, on the discussion on that, I wanted to just know what the economic.
Nobody's gonna tell anybody no unless it comes to this point.
Yeah.
And you are more, you should actually be on that committee then, cause you sound like you know shit, not about marketing. And I'm on that board.
Oh, is that what came out of that discussion?
We have a, we have a motion for the budget on the table.
Yeah.
All right.
It's already been seconded.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Jeff, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to recap for a hundred and twenty seconds or less. This was a smart decision. And that's coming from a guy who's an economic developer guy who's seen lots of pit districts, seen lots of throw, wanting values to go up to straighten this stuff up. In spite of that, this was a good decision. Why was it a good decision? There was a question, a challenge, if you will, from Tyler about, does this really make sense? The answer in my opinion is yes, cause you don't have a game plan. And what I saw in the last five or ten minutes is while we had a sign, we didn't have a sign.
Yeah, right.
That's not a game plan, as we all know. And that, in my billing, you'll see reference to comprehensive plan. I'm reading that. I'm looking at, uh, problems. This is one of the things that I think you need to attack, and that's one of the things I hope to bring to you, is, is a plan that's reasonable, if you'd like that. I'm here to serve you, so it's not stuff that I bring up.
And I do, because I do sit on the economic development committee and I was there the last time I was on the board. And we struggle with our identity, but we also struggle with how are we gonna fund it? And what kind are we gonna do? And who are we really trying to refer?
Okay.
Because if we could go back.
We gotta move on now, this ain't, not easy.
All right.
Any other business that may be fraught before the board for future agendas?
I just. What is? I, I noticed, uh, item five, we didn't approve the minutes for ten, twelve. We only approved for ten-four.
She did both.
No, I did both at the same time.
Yeah, we did both at the same time.
I was, yeah, okay, never mind.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'd just like to make everybody aware that on Tuesday, November fifteenth at two P M, the Public Service Commission is taking up the electrical rate case, is that right?
Yep, correct.
And that will be a function that will happen in the office?
Yes, yes.
You're gonna be here?
Yes.
And so the public is more than welcome to attend because it's certain and it's gonna be good news.
Happy birthday to me.
Oh, there you go. So on the next board agenda, I am going to put a, um, presentation from our electric review. Um.
Open the guy.
Yeah, I've, I've got it. It's not pretty. And then hopefully we'll have options by then. We've been working on them, um, from the borrowing people, elders.
Yep.
Um, so we will have some options and what we're gonna do, we can decide at that point.
This is about the substation and whether to continue or not?
Yep.
Okay.
So very interesting, uh, not a pretty picture, so.
Danny, did you ever hear back from the people that wanted to purchase the property or build on the property over by.
Oh, old meat market.
Meat market?
I haven't heard.
Did you ever hear back to them?
I have not either.
Did you tell, do you, but you sent them a letter saying, hey, this is what we want you to come to the board meeting?
I haven't sent anything.
I think Shelley was still here then, wasn't she, when we talked about that? Well, if they want about enough, they'll come for.
Yeah.
I, I could reach out to her too. She's on E D C.
Is this for the lean-to?
Huh?
This is for the, they wanted to, they wanted a lean-to and wanted us to, you know, give up the right to the right of way or whatever.
Yeah.
All right, what's the next meeting date?
Um, next meeting will be.
Well, public hearing.
Oh, yeah, we'll have a public hearing before that.
Fifteen days for the data publication.
Which will be tomorrow. Sixteenth, probably, right?
Well, let's see.
Do the week of the twentieth.
It'll be.
You'll send an email?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's also depending on when it's published, how it's published, when the next, yeah, yeah, that's right, okay.